First thing I would like to do is introduce Ray Owensby. Ray is, serves as a commissioner on the Dubuque County Veterans Commission, and does stellar work for our veterans in this community. And I've asked Ray to come up and join us and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, exactly.
So if everyone would rise, please, move your caps. All right, Ray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ray. And for an old guy, he's not a bad golfer. Ray, did you hear that?
I heard.
We have, the next item on the agenda is public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium and state your name and home address. And what that would be is if there's something on here that you would like to comment on, now's the time. You can, you can go to the podium and approach it. I think when we get to the resolution on the Martin Luther King Junior Birthday Holiday, I think that'll be, there'll be a time there for folks to come to the podium and talk about that. So, but if there's other items, and then if you're here for a zoning case or anything like that, that would, you can wait until that comes up. But other than that, anything on the agenda, this is for, an opportunity for public comments for things that are on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to, normally item number one is proclamations. I don't believe we have any today. So I would go for item number three, which is consent items. And today we have liquor license for Thunder Hills Country Club.
I think the auditor wants you back up to minutes.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, I missed one. Item number two, approval of minutes of the meeting of November 25, 2019.
Motion to approve as presented.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the November 25 meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, consent items, item number three, liquor license for Thunder Hills Country Club.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the consent item. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. Procurement procedures, I don't believe we have any. We have item number five, which is public hearing.
Motion to approve the proof of publication.
And I will second that.
Okay. All right, motion made and seconded to approve the proof of publication. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have a notice of public hearing for the courthouse elevator modernization project.
I didn't know if you were going to have Chris explain the project at all, or just want to open up the public hearing, or...
This is the notice.
This is the notice, my bad, my, just the notice. I'll make a motion to approve the notice of public hearing.
Okay, thank you. And Mary, what's the date of that?
January 2nd.
January 2nd, thank you. All right, January 2nd, notice of public hearing for the courthouse elevator modernization project. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. All right, we do have a public hearing. Item number five C, public hearing amendment to ZC number 11-29-19, Kenneth and Darla Hush, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential. We'll turn it over to our zoning administrator, Tammy Henry, and Angie Steph.
Angie, Angie's here today. I can't be here to join you.
She would be able to learn what we do.
Absolutely.
It was there just a second ago. Had it on and then went off. Oh, there, it's back on. There we go, okay, all right. Sorry about that. Okay, this is for zoning case 1129 of 19 for Kenneth and Darla Hush. The applicants are requested to rezone from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential, 1.44 acres, to be allowed to separate the home and the farm buildings to sell to their son so he can continue to assist in the farming operation. The property is located .05 miles south of the city of Piastah along Sundown Road and is legally described as Lot 1 of Hush Place, Section 16, T88 North, R1E Vernon Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Kenneth and Darla Hush. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the south, the east, and the west. B1 business highway to the south. The B1 business highway to the south on zoning case number 931 of 16 was to allow for a beauty shop. There were no special use permits attached to this property. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. Three rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Piastah was notified. Comprehensive plan, Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So what we have here is, they're coming in to this section, they're going to plat this off and rezone in this area. This is the B1 business that was approved, and that's the hair salon that's out in Piastah, or just outside of Piastah. So what they're actually going to rezone is around the farmhouse and the buildings. But eventually, they will be plating this piece, which is next. They'll plat this piece for the son to have that as well. And this will show you the buildings we're talking about in the area.
There's no questions, I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing.
Second. I'm sorry, second.
Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone here to speak on the public hearing?
Dave, you're here, he's got to, he's got to speak.
Nobody wants to go.
I was thinking when the thing went blank, you could just come up here and recite this by memory. Recognize Dave Schneider?
Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Service, 906 First Street, North Farley Isle. I think I got that code. Not yet, anyway. Basically, working with Ken and Darla, they, they bought this, this house was acquired when they bought the farm ground. Obviously, they went through the rezoning. They have two daughters running that commercial business just to the south of there that I think went through two, three years ago.
Yep.
And the daughters have been living in this old farmhouse. It's an old stone house. And apparently, they don't anymore. They got married, whatever, and now their son is going to purchase it from them and, and continue to live there, I guess. And yeah, no real plans on any changes to the way it looks out there, just trying to get it split off, put it in his name, and let him build some equity, I guess. He does help them with farmer operation. Ken farms quite a bit of ground. I know he said he had five, 600 acres of beans, and when I was working on this, so, and I don't know how much corn he has on top of that, so. But, so yeah, that's, that's basically what their intent is here. And I think they also realize that this is probably going to be in Piastah at some point, and this old house and these buildings at some point probably are going to end up disappearing, so.
Thanks, Dave. Tammy, I had a question. Was this part of our, was this one of our first home business ones, or am I confusing it with another?
Yeah, you're confusing that with one of our home-based businesses.
Yeah.
So they actually did a rezoning, and that was done in 16 to allow for that beauty shop.
All right, any other comments? Anyone else under, want to comment under the public hearing? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. Back to the supervisors.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the rezoning. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the requirement that amendment be considered and voted on at two prior meetings. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero.
I'll make a motion that this amendment be adopted, the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes in the official zoning map, and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment, and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspaper as required by law.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the rezoning. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Thank you.
Whoops, she's up next.
I'll run right up here.
Number six, approval of Platts Resolution, final plat, Hush Place, plat two, Section two, Vernon Township.
Okay, so this property is owned by Kenneth and Darla Hush, and it is located .05 miles south of the city of Piastah along Sundown Road, with a total of 32.49 acres surveyed. The property is zoned A1 agricultural, with your most recent approval of changing this. The purpose of the plat is to separate the home and the farm buildings to sell to the son. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of 3.26 acres surveyed with the home and the buildings, and it will be sold to the son. Lot two is a total of 29.23 acres surveyed, and it will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot one will use an existing residential access off of Sundown Road and Hehosh Drive, and lot two will use a 20-foot access easement across lot one off Sundown Road and Hehosh Drive. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. The mortgages acknowledgement is signed and attached, and all the signatures are current. This plat has been reviewed by myself as Platts Officer, and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So this is just following up with what we're doing from your previous case.
Okay, any questions for Tammy or Angie?
Very efficient. Well done. I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the plat as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the plat. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. All right, item seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven on the agenda, which is action items. The board may approve, deny, or table any action item. Item 7A, resolution, appointment of deputies, assistants, and clerks.
And this is the revised one, is that correct?
Yes, you have revised one.
Okay, thank you.
And Dawn, do you have any comments?
I reviewed all these and recommend approval with the addition of the secondary roads that was the paper copy in front of you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented in its amended form.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. All right, item 7B, and this is a resolution regarding the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. And I'm going to read the resolution before I do that. I want to say that I'm very pleased and proud to be sitting here today, reading this resolution. I think that it's, I think it should have been done a long time ago, but I will, some of the background on this is, I have religiously attended the Martin Luther King Junior breakfast. And last year, when I got here after the breakfast and saw the sign that said, "State office is closed, county office is open," and I know that other agencies celebrate this birthday, the birthday holiday of Dr. Martin Luther King, as they should, as a, as a holiday to be celebrated. And so I asked that we start the discussion. I know we have collective bargaining to work in with this, but I just wanted to say how proud I am that we're taking this step forward. So I'll let the other supervisors comment if they like.
Well, I, I wanted to know if it's the recommendation of our HR director that we do this, and then also to ask you if you've done any, I agree, we're late to this as an idea, but today's the day. So, but, you know, looking at other counties, what do other counties do? What is the relationship between this holiday and the broader community at large, if you know? I did ask some folks in your office on Friday to make some calls. Tanya did that for me. So just asking if the HR department would like to address this issue.
Oh, absolutely, thank you. You know, I, I share Supervisor Baker's comment of, I was disappointed when I came here to see that we were not designating this day. It's very important, especially as a, as an HR professional, you know, having inclusiveness within your county, within, for, whether it be employment, or, you know, small businesses, minority businesses, those should all be recognized in everything that we do, in the programs that we present. And so absolutely, I encourage the, the approval of this holiday. It is, it's, yes, it's very common, you know, the, the state designates it, the city designates it, past employers that I've worked with, it's not uncommon. Just note that you have approved this holiday for two of our bargaining units that we bargained for, so they are, you have already shown your support for this day through those bargaining units, and then this would also carry on to others, the non-bargaining, the other unions as well.
So I'd ask you, Dawn, to help us as a county, in light of your past experience, to help us make this be, not just as the folks have talked this morning, a check that it's a done, but that it's the beginning of having greater discussion and moving forward on not just inclu, encouraging our staff to go to the Martin Luther King breakfast, that seems to be somewhat of a minimum, but also to be looking at, how do we brought, how do we address inclusivity? How do we look at encouraging minority voices on all of our committees and our subcommittees? And I think you're, you have that background to help us grow that, and I know we have committed partners here in the room who are anxious to have the conversation as well. So I appreciate your comments today. Thank you.
Jake?
Very pleased we're celebrating it, and just as Supervisor McDonough said, a shout out to Anthony Allen, Grease Jones, with your leadership in the community, we greatly appreciate that.
All right, I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior changed our nation forever through his leadership, service, and vision for excellence, and equality for all, and, whereas Dubuque County recognizes and appreciates the significant legacy of freedom and equality left by Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, and, whereas Dubuque County recognizes and honors the occasion of the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, and wishes to honor the lasting legacy of this great American, remembering the ideals for which he fought, and recommitting ourselves to ensuring that our country's promise extends to all Americans across this great land. And now therefore be it resolved that the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors designates Martin Luther King Junior's birthday as an official county holiday, and encourages all Americans to celebrate his memory by performing acts of kindness through service to others. This resolution is adopted this ninth day of December 2019, Dubuque County Board of Supervisors. So I'd ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, I would ask if anyone that's here would like to go to the podium and talk about our resolution, I would welcome that at this point. If Ray, or Grease, or Anthony, or anyone else in the room want to make a comment. I, I know my friend Ray has never had a loss for words, so.
This, I deeply appreciate the supervisors making this a, an actual living, breathing animal, right? People don't necessarily ever remember what you say, they remember what you do, right? And when you do something like this, right, this lets them know that, you know, that maybe the focus is in the right direction, and we appreciate that, right? That's coming from, my name is Ray Owensby, 2955 Hillcrest Road, right, representing for the people and Dubuque County of Veterans Affairs.
Thank you, Ray.
I did it backwards.
You did fine.
Well, thank you guys for inviting us here today. And I'm just very grateful for the opportunity to bear witness to change. You know, it comes in different forms, and it comes at different times, and I'm just humbled to be able to be alive and free, to be a part of the change. Because Martin Luther King Junior, since a child, he's always been like a mentor to me. And he was a part of my change even while he's not even here, because he would always be the one to reflect back on, like, my responsibilities to be a part of the solutions instead of part of the problems that I was once a part of. And I think it's a testament to the growth that Dubuque has taken these days by stepping out of fear, stepping out on courage, and hope, and entering into the dream that every American is supposed to be able to experience. So I thank you, but also, I want to say it's a testament to the work that Anthony Allen and Ray, because they've been here before me. And I'm just, I'm just a recipient of the process that they already begun, and I'm just here now to break it all the way through. So I thank you guys, and go Dubuque.
Grease? Thank you.
No, I just want to thank all of you. This is a brave step. My name is Anthony Allen, I represent the NAACP, PO Box 1012, Dubuque, Iowa. One of the things we always work toward is making sure that we locate peaceful heroes. And our MLK tribute this year is, the theme is peaceful heroes. So you're becoming peaceful heroes by allowing this to go further. You know, earlier we talked about, yeah, it's going to be heat. It may be some heat, but that means we're cooking. You know, I look at it that way. That means we're cooking, so we just got to make sure things get done, and continue to get done. So I thank you, and I applaud you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
If they would like, would you guys, would you want a picture?
Picture?
Should we do a photo? We usually do that for all our...
Let's get all the supervisors in. Come on up, come on up, we'll get it right by the American flag.
I'm going to move mine anyway. Oh, yes.
I just want to be careful of this.
You can have a hat if I can wear jeans, right? As long as you don't, as long as you don't get a resolution on the dress code, I'll be happy.
Thank you.
All right. Good here?
We good. All right, thank you again.
Thank you, thank you, Dave.
Grease, your service.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, thank you. Grease, good to see you again. Anthony?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ray, you don't have to hustle to the bowling alley or anything, do you? No, I got a little weak.
Oh, okay. That's right. If we don't keep moving, it might be 9:11:30. Next item is 7C, resolution approving the 2019 Weed Commissioners Report.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
So, uniform in our UCC, so the Urban County Coalition, there was some discussion about this weed report and what the expectation is, and is the state ask us to report the right things? I think it goes somewhat to the discussion of, with the changes in our environment, you know, is anybody looking at this? I obviously know that, you know, Nate's very capable, right? But is, I just don't know if there's any discussion we want to have. I'm not suggesting a work session, I just, to be aware that this report was showing things that are showing up that have never been seen before. I thought that there were some noteworthy things in the weed report, which is not a sentence I ever thought I would say in my life, but there it is. So I don't know if you either looked at that and just noted, you know, that too, that it's found a problem in my county. I mean, we have some, we have some issues here that we might want to, you know, be just drawing some public attention to, and then also, you know, the amount of, and the chemicals that we're using to, you know, under the weed, you know, this isn't done just by anybody, but the Weed Commissioners Report certainly shows problems, and, you know, that we're attempting to resolve. So I don't know, Jay, if that's discussed in, at the Conservation Board, you know, or if this, just he is at this by himself? Is there somewhat other support we should give?
Yeah, I think, you know, in the, the report, it's good education information, and there's small recommendations as far as just increased funding for, for mowing before some of these noxious weeds go to, to bloom. And then it's also good probably just to understand better what our policies are related to the right-of-way and the parks related to pesticides. It seems like the issues are getting bigger, so there's more and more that they, at Conservation Meetings, talk about as far as just issues that they have to, to take care of on our conservation property. And then, I don't know, Anthony, is this, is, does this report include the right-of-way components as well? Okay. So we haven't had a lot of discussion on it, but, you know, certainly the, a couple of recommendations I'll be, I'll be looking at and talking about at the Conservation Board related to, you know, trying to increase the funding for, for additional mowing and trying to prevent some of these from spreading.
I would say I, you know, from time to time, and sometimes it's tied in with budget, we've had Brian Preston come in, maybe it's time for an update, or maybe as part of his budget presentation, we could ask him to address this. But, so I agree, and Anthony, you would, your department would have input into this as well, is that not correct?
Yeah, Brian Preston's trying to work. He wants to, you know, help further educate them to, you know, recognize these species and what chemicals to use, what pesticides, so that's kind of an active...
I'm viewing this more as an edu, education of, of the supervisors, and I think then, because it's in a public meeting, that gets passed on to the, to the citizens. So maybe if you don't mind, we can get with Brian and see about maybe either working it in with one of your regular, you know, road work sessions in the future. I don't think...
If you go to page two, can you scroll up one page? Because those are the ones, the answer number one is that they are found and they are a problem in our county, and they don't fit on the, you know, these are things that, it seems to me as I look at this, you know, invasive prohibited plants, they're here, they're a problem. I don't, no, I mean, they, they must be filled in by Nate, maybe that it's unique to us, not necessarily on the standard form. So it kind of goes to, you know, maybe, you know, he's a quiet man, maybe this is him telling us, hey, look at this, you've got, you know, five of these things that are problems, and I'm identifying them, and so just, if there's more discussion to be had about this, it's, I just didn't want to receive and file, I wanted to make sure that we at least paused to make sure we read the, read this and had understanding. I, I think that the spraying of some of those chemicals is, you know, you're in a bad spot. The chemicals themselves can cause harm, but what else are, what are our other solutions? Because we have to keep up on this, because by their nature, they're, you know, noxious weeds, so.
One of those things we have to carefully balance too, because, you know, there are some sensitive areas that people do not want to spray around. We've had some public complaints with some of our spraying, you know, windy days, we can't spray because of the crops, so it's, it's definitely a sensitive balance that...
Yeah.
And I know the Sisters of the Order of St. Francis have used the goats on the go, and maybe things like that we could look at. I mean, I know people get a chuckle, my wife and my grandkids love to see the goats out there chomping away, but they're really there for a purpose, and it's environmentally friendly, but I'm saying that that might be, you know, that might be an alternative.
I don't disagree with the strategic use of goats. And I'm saying that with humor in my voice, because it's, again, another, another sentence I didn't think I would say in a public meeting ever in my life, but there... I didn't think I would say in a public meeting ever in my life, but there it is. So, but as the, as we, no, but as this, as our county changes due to the weather changes, it's our responsibility, and I think all three of us share that, that we, we're being asked to lead on that and ask the questions about what's changing and what's different. So if there's something that's noteworthy, I would appreciate you getting back to us from our Roads Department. And then also, Jay, I'd appreciate the, you know, Conservation Board's remarks if they have any.
And I know this is my third Weed Commissioner Report, and I couldn't help, as I was reading it last week when I was on the road, that when Weed Commissioner popped up, I'm thinking that in January, the first meeting of the Joe Davis County Weed Commissioner might take on a new meeting.
Might be a different type of commission.
Tongue-in-cheek, of course. All right.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Weed Commissioners Report.
And I will second that. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero, thank you. All right. Item D, 7D, Resolution Approving the Release of Mortgage in Loiza County for Jump Start Federal Housing Rehabilitation Payment Program.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that. Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero. My understanding, next resolution is 7E and then also 7F. Our HR Director, Don Sherman, has recommended that we table this because we have a work session on this later today. So I entertain a motion. Can we do those at once, Mary? No, separate. So item 7E is a resolution approving the contract with Cypress Solutions for a Rhodes GPS Pilot Program. And the recommendation is to table this till our meeting today.
So moved.
And I will second that. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So 7F, Resolution Approving the West Campus Project Change Order 004-BP2. That's also recommended for tabling because we have a meeting in regard to that today. I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Okay, now we're going to 7G. 7Gs, approving, Resolution Approving the Use of Vehicle Administrative Policy. I guess I would go to our HR Director, Don Sherman, for her input on this.
Thank you. So I worked with our Budget Director and member and staff from our Auditor's Office to update our vehicle policy. We really wanted to look at, we wanted to modernize some of the language in there, but we also wanted to ensure that we were identifying taxability of some of our take-home vehicles. We know there are not many that will actually be, will fit under that taxability, but it is something that we wanted to address. And we also wanted to provide some guidance of determining who is eligible for a take-home vehicle. So we added some verbiage in there as well to help department heads and elected officials give them some guidance when they're considering allowing a vehicle to be taken home by an employee.
One of the requests I had is the count of actual vehicles that we had, and I think I received that from, I don't know who sent it, but whether it was Don, Stella, thank you. And one was for the sheriff's cars and then the other ones for, were non-sheriff departments?
Some of those encompass whatever.
Okay. And most likely, I think we've, we've had, you know, discussions on sheriff vehicles going home. I don't know if we have any plain marked cars that are used in the Sheriff's Department for deputy or for detectives or other things, but I was really more interested probably in the operations vehicles and how many we have. The spreadsheet's quite long. Did we have a count? Is there 20? Is there 50? Well, just county vehicles that we had that would be covered under this policy. That's kind of what I was getting at. Just understand what, what's the depth of this policy. But what you're saying is the long, the copy of the 2020 vehicle schedule, that includes the sheriff cars as well? So I'd have to break those out.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that actually, knowing that number two, and probably the public at large would. Would it be something that we could perhaps table and come back to, to look at that?
Possibly, and then it would also, you know, break out probably the, the equipment components. So any large trucks that would be considered, I assume large trucks are not take-home, Anthony? So anything that would be normally used in, in non-construction operations and probably non-sheriff policing operations? Just to get an understanding of what that number is.
And then I had a question, is this, I, I'm not really seeing it, but we've had discussions or issues about carpooling. In most, I think in most cases, it's, you know, if it's a county vehicle, obviously it's, it's not an issue, but, you know, we do occasionally have training conferences where multiple employees drive, and I, I didn't see anything specific in here. If we're sending X amount of people, let's, I'll just use around number four, to a conference, I don't think we need to have four vehicles going that we're paying people mileage for. Now, in the past, there have been some, you know, variations, some discussion on that, but I think, I don't see that in here. Was that discussed or is that in a different policy?
It's not in a policy. That would be more procedural, it'd be when you approve the travel authorizations, you would have the opportunity there to deny if somebody wanted to use a vehicle. We did not, it was not in the previous policy and we did not add that to here, but we could, but it would be more through the.
Well, the problem with that is if with, you know, if it's an elected official's department and they don't, you know, they don't want to, you know, suggest that or enforce that, then we, there's not much we can do about it. I think if it's in our policies, I think there should be some reference to carpool. I, I, so if we're going to table this, I would like that to be looked at and it just doesn't make sense to pay mileage to multiple employees going to the same location.
So the scope of the policy, all employees who report through or responsible to you are covered by this. For employees that are, that have an elected official or like Conservation Board, that have a, a board that they report to, they each individually would have to adopt this policy or choose to follow it. So if they're under an elected official, it ultimately, regardless of what our policy says, if the elected official does not adopt that as their department policy, we would not be able to enforce it.
Well, and I get, I get that, but we, we need to have a policy and then I would like to, if, if there are departments that don't want to follow this, I would want to have a discussion with them on why the county policy isn't, that they don't want to follow. What, what, what's different from, you know, because there's an elected official that's in charge of that department versus an appointed official? I, I think the same rules should apply. I think we should have uniform rules, policies and procedures which, so maybe we need to even go back and ask our elected officials to sign off, I don't know if that's the right term, or adopt this or acknowledge this policy and have some teeth in there for, you know, for things such as carpooling. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's protecting the taxpayers is, is what it's doing. So I, I think if this was a, you know, if we were a business and we had four people going to the same location, I think they would be expected to ride together. So why should government be any different? And I would want to have that discussion with any elected official that, that wants to have that discussion.
And I think it's noteworthy here that Anthony, your crew just received an award in Des Moines and all four of you went down in one vehicle.
Right.
So I thought that was just a well-timed example of carpooling right there. So it's also a way to compliment you without you being on the agenda. So well done.
I think.
I would be generally in favor of having one policy. I think that would be the, the goal. Past that, the only other item I had kind of, you know, some, some items would be number six. I think it's, I don't know if it's, if you go to six, keep scrolling further in the document, related to electronic communication. I think we just be clear in that, it's kind of, you know, just electronic communication's pretty, pretty vague. I think specifically calling out, using handheld devices while operating or just more clear languages. Because the, the concept of electronic communication and then cell phone, like voice calls, just making that clear. And then, if we want to go down that road, it's on my mind, so I'll say it. So the, the other piece related to using your personal vehicles, the policy also states that this county policy covers that. So that would prohibit us from talking on the phone for lengths of time in our personal vehicles. So all employees using their personal vehicles on a regular basis, which would be the supervisors, must provide proof of insurance, that's no problem. What was the other one? Oh, the policy part. Using their personal vehicles for the purpose of conducting county-related business. And it goes back to the previous ones where you're not supposed to be on calls of a longer length. And unfortunately, that, that occurs. It's hard to tell citizens to stop talking. Hang up that one and. So those would be the ones we should probably just talk about. But otherwise, the rest of the policy I thought was, was logical and made sense. I would support it.
Do the other supervisors share my concern about carpooling?
I mean, I think it's, I think when it makes sense, you, you, you do it, you know, and clearly if you're going to an event and you have the ability of the vehicle to accommodate the people, you, you do it. Not everyone's schedules line up for that always, so it's probably not an always thing, but, you know, certainly the intent would be to carpool and to, to, to share that resource.
I think you could say that it's the recommendation that carpooling be, be discussed where appropriate. I know that something that's come up before is, you know, the required carpooling of attorneys to go to the same, you know, the county attorneys to go to the same Okoboji Conference. I honestly, I don't think we're ever going to get that to happen. Everyone leaves for that event as their schedule allows and returns as their schedule allows and as their, you know, like, I think it's some, it's important that we all think about it, but, and I think that could be in a policy, but I don't know how every department is best known by its director as to how it relates. So, but I, I think, Don, the meeting that you had, there were, I would, as I commented at the end of the meeting to you privately, there weren't very many people in attendance. I would have expected to see a robust showing of directors and maybe elected officials when you were discussing this policy and the following one as well with them as it relates. I think there were maybe four.
I had requested feedback as well, so I had some emails just saying that they were okay with it if they were not able to attend as well. But it was sent out twice to all the elected officials and department heads for comment review.
But if they haven't given you feedback and they didn't come, then I'm not sure they're even going to have a discussion about carpooling unless we make that front and center.
If you choose to table, we can, we can take your suggestions and apply it to the policy and bring that back in January and then also have a breakdown of the different vehicles. We can have that ready for you in January then too.
That'd be great. I'll make a motion to, to table this resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to table the resolution. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Tabled. All right. Next is 7H. This is approving, a resolution approving the cell phone administrative policy.
This one as well, I would be interested in knowing how many, how many phones we had out there and I didn't want to send you another email and have you scramble if it wouldn't have much value, because I know that's probably a big task. But just to organize how many plans we have, how many people are covered, and then possibly what we anticipate, if your two buckets are still the same, county provided full and then stipend, what we'd anticipate or propose to make those changes.
Well, you said as part of the budget process too.
I mean, just, I, I read the policy and I know that it, it states that if somebody just occasionally receives a call on their personal cell phone, it doesn't qualify them for, as county use. But I would also like to know how many people, I mean, I see the claims that come through for cell phone reimbursement and also the claims which are several for our monthly cell phone plans. And we have different carriers, probably different plans. I don't know how often those are reviewed. And I guess I would, was, was all that discussed during this, during these meetings?
It, it was. Right now, the, the process or the practices, each department had an elected official determines their own, they, they go out and contract with the provider for their department. So yes, we, you'll write out a check to several different providers each month. It's a very decentralized process. Again, that's kind of why we looked at the policy is to give some guidance to determine who gets a, like a stipend. We want to ensure that it's not being abused, which I don't think that it is, but we want to give them some guidance of, you know, that it has to be that they're outside of their office frequently, you know, they're not able to be in their, you know, they travel frequently. So, yeah, it's a very decentralized process. We don't have a central department that manages self, county-issued cell phones.
Well, one of the, one of the issues I have, I believe that we are providing cell phones for state employees, for DHS.
That is correct.
We are reimbursed. But even with that, we're reimbursed, okay? It's still tax dollars. Does somebody, does somebody occasionally review those to make sure we're getting the best bang for the buck? I am not into government, you know, okay, we get reimbursed, and I get that, and that makes me feel better that we get reimbursed. But I still pay, like everybody else, state taxes. So I don't believe we should be wasting any tax dollars. So how do we control this? Does the state have a cell phone police person that reviews this? You know, I'm not, if, if they're a county department and especially elected officials, I think it would be in their best interest to get the best deal for the taxpayers, but I don't necessarily feel the same way about, you know, about agencies that we don't have control over. I'm not being critical. So how, how do we do that? Can we, do we have the ability to ask them to review? So I, that's a concern I have, because I don't have control over that. The only thing we get to do is approve the payment and, and write the check, so.
Well, and that brings my question. I didn't see in the document the stipend amount that was proposed.
We would have it that. Or the supervisors would approve that through the budget process.
Okay. I would be interested in having that proposed in this document. I mean, I'm happy to make that decision, but I don't want to have to go through all the details and thought process that, you know, comes up with that. So if you get feedback from the departments and elected officials on what is a valid stipend for those use, and it could vary amongst departments.
Yeah, we, there, some of the things that we consider when we were looking at them is that we have seen policies that have a tiered system depending on the percentage of time you use on it. So we did not have to update the policy annually, that's why we put it, we thought it would be best placed in the budget process, so that you can change it annually without us having to update the policy every year. But we can give a recommendation, we have, there are. We have, there are two different levels of payments now, and so we can provide that to you and provide a recommendation.
That was going to be my next question. I know that, I know that some are reimbursed forty dollars a month. That seems to be fairly common, but I also think there's, is there a thirty-five?
There's a thirty and a forty. And there's also some, I know that we're looking at just reimbursing them, for example, in the elections department, that that would only be a stipend for a few months because during the election time, when it gets closer, staff is out of the office frequently and needs accessibility. So, so even the stipends may not be an ongoing, you know, twelve month stipend. It may just be a few months out of the year, depending on the individual need.
Okay, but some are month after month, every month. And I mean, if somebody, if, if a department head were wanting to change that, either increase or decrease, what would the process be? I don't, I don't know.
Right now, the, the elected official department head just contacts the auditor's office. Under this policy, you would be determining what that stipend is.
So the auditor would, or would it come back to us or?
Well, the policy has it that the board of supervisors would be determining the stipend.
So can we get a list of cell phones that we're paying for? I think that's reasonable. And can we get a list from the state? And, and here's, again, I'm, I'm going back to this, but I'm picturing a basket full of cell phones not being used because there's unfilled positions and, you know, no, that might be paranoid on my part, but that's what I'm picturing. We've got numerous people that work at DHS. So if the state doesn't fill a position, do we cancel that cellphone for that period of time so we're not paying for it? I think it's reasonable now that the basket of cell phones is probably an exaggeration. But you know, there's been worse things that have happened in government and so I'm, I'm concerned, I want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck. And I view state taxes and municipal taxes and school taxes and county taxes, it's all, you know, it's all comes out of the taxpayers' pockets and that we should be good stewards at all levels.
You can reach out to them.
All right. Thank you.
My, my last recommendation too would be to include components related to the signature lines, web and business cards of those phones. So if you are receiving a stipend or you are receiving a county phone, try to match that up to the communication out to the public. Cause I think generally, you know, the, the way it's going, mobile use and cellphone use is probably the best way to reach citizens. And so I, I'm encouraged and I'm glad we're having a policy and I'd like that policy to support that type of communication so that we can, as a government, can be accessible when we need to be. And sometimes related to roads and EMS and various other areas, that might be twenty-four seven and for others, it might be more eight to five, so to speak.
I'm not sure what you're asking, Jay, are those cell phones supposed to be published then? Should Anthony's cellphone be available to the public?
If we're, I mean, so in, in general, I would think that if we're paying for a stipend in a cellphone, those would be part of the published list. I don't want to call out any one employee now just because of their, 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 you know, processes, but I think that would be what you'd want is that this, yeah, open records and the citizens can access them and, and make that communication. All of our cell phones are published. Cities of Dubuque, city council, it's not. None of the city council members are published at all and I'm very proud that our supervisors publish our personal cell phones, which we probably should mention, how does this policy cover the board of supervisors? And what have you found related to supervisors throughout the state?
Cause this is, you know, I would actually have to look, cause it says it's for the employees who report to the board of supervisors. Does it apply to the board of supervisors? I don't believe it would.
Okay. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I wasn't calling that out, but just, it was my question.
It, it would be important to have, if we're going to look at the cell phones that we assign to, again, I don't know if we do that for county attorneys, but that we state to those folks, you're, you'll need to have more people come, John, to these meetings to say, because if we're going to publish, and I don't disagree that we do, but that's something you'll want to talk through in your department, that here's your cellphone and it's going to be on your business card and it's going to be on the new website and, you know, that could be, that could be a factor whether or not somebody wants a county issued cellphone, whether or not they want those calls. Certainly would be a game changer for any county attorney. So just to have that be noted, I think.
Once we revise it, we'll kind of get our team back together, our small group, take into consideration your comments and we'll reapproach the elected officials and department.
I just want to make sure CJ, I'm clear, I don't mean the county attorney, I'm talking about assistant county attorneys.
They, they do not.
Get John the mic.
For example, what we have is we have an on-call phone because somebody's on call, you know, from Friday to Friday.
For law enforcement primarily.
Right.
And the courts.
Right, and the courts and the jail and all of that. There was another phone which was, the felony lawyers would carry it so that someone of the person, the on-call person had a, like a bigger question, so to speak, but they, we've agreed and decided that, that the numbers are in there and they can just call them their personal phone. And then Mr. Potter had a phone, which I'm not quite so sure what all he did with it. And I've had some brief discussion with Denise about that. I don't carry it really myself. I've left it in the office if the others needed for something, but so, but yeah, I think as we move forward, it's probably something to talk about. I know I, I think it makes great sense to tidy this up, cause like for instance, you know, there's kind of these phones laying around and I think the one that was the felony phone, a couple of buttons didn't work, which I kind of beg the question if the phone literally is not physically working, it's, we probably need to do something about that, but that's for another day, I guess. So, but, but yeah, it's supervisors McDonald, I think, you know, it, it does kind of bring some questions, but I think it's on the right path though. I mean, I looked at it and I had some, my message is banned to talk, cause I think I was at the fall conference when this, when the meeting was, I think.
I'm assuming that the cellphone information is all available in the various budgets. Is it, can we pull that together into a report for a future meeting?
There's a list. Could be argued.
Okay.
They didn't.
Is it?
Be accessible in the budget.
Okay. So there wouldn't be like a line item in a budget for cellphone?
Oh.
Okay. But it wouldn't necessarily identify cell phones? It could be office phones as well?
I think.
They're appropriated.
The entire of the office.
Okay.
We'll see that.
Okay.
So Dawn, thank you for taking the leadership on the vehicle and the cellphone and it's been good discussion. I'll make a motion to table the cellphone policy resolution.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to table, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero. All right. Next up is a resolution, item seven I, approving necessary right-of-way documents for HMA resurfacing with milling and pipe culverts project on Monastery Road, project FM dash C zero three one, one zero seven dash five five dash three one.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero. Resolution, item seven J, approve the plans and specifications for HMA resurfacing with milling and pipe culverts project on Monastery Road, project FM C zero three one, one zero seven dash five five dash three one.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero. Item seven, seven K, resolution to approve plans and specifications for HMA resurfacing full depth reclamation and pipe culverts project on Wapperton Road, project FM dash C zero three one, one zero eight dash five five dash three one.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second. Okay. And seconded in discussion, Anthony, this, this is a full, you're re, what, relaying the road bed. And this, I think you told me is probably one of the worst roads in Dubuque County.
Yeah, condition wise, I would say it's, it's right there, maybe number one, number two of the entire county. This would be similar to like the cold and place process, but we're going deeper. We go twelve inches deep with a cement additive that we add into it and so it, it creates a firm base for the HMA surfacing that we put on top of it.
Okay. All right. The motion was made and seconded to approve the resolution, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero. Item seven L, resolution to approve plans and specifications for the HMA resurfacing pipe culverts and RCB new single box culvert project on Dyersville East Road, project FM dash C zero three one, one zero nine dash five five dash three one.
Ask Anthony if you have any thing you can add to this, just generally this, I think this is out there connected to the area where the major league baseball expansion's happening. And we had this planned previously, this doesn't relate to that.
Yes, we've had this planned for four or five years now. It just coincidentally is lining up with major league baseball this year, but it's, it's actually good timing.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero. Move to item eight on the agenda, communications. This is correspondence, the board will receive and file without taking action. Damage claim, sentry link cable, receive and refer to budget director Stella Rundy is the recommendation.
Make a motion to receive and file and send to Stella Rundy.
Okay. And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to refer to, receive and refer to budget director Rundy, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero. Item nine is appointments. Under nine A, one, number one, medical examiners and deputy, three vacancies for a two-year term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. We have any input on this? This is the two McKeen, Dr. McKeens and Alex Jones.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the appointment, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero. Nine A two, Dubuque County Board of Health, and this is Tom Beschen has applied. He currently is the chair of that committee and is reapplying.
He's the current chair, motion to approve.
I guess his term is up, is, is what the, the deal is, so. There is a motion to approve.
I'm looking for more discussion, so I, at this point, won't be seconding it, not that I don't want.
I'll, I'll second it for the purpose of moving it forward in discussion, so I'll open it for discussion.
This was a board, they had requested some number changes on the board and that's what I wanted some clarification on if, I think we had approved that and what was the number and I don't know if you or others know.
I do know, so they had sent an email to you letting you know their intention to discuss that at their December meeting. So they're, they have a board meeting on December eleventh in which they were going to make a recommendation to bring to you to reduce that number from eight to seven. So right now, it is approved for eight members and this appointment would be that eighth member.
Okay.
We, we recently did an appointment. We recently did an appointment.
Okay.
Matthew Sanford.
And they, so to me then, it doesn't, I mean, I think Mr. Beschen does a great job. He's on two of our boards. So are they saying they, they want us to hold off on this in case they go to seven?
They have not indicated that to me. They, they have not had a meeting since they sent that email as well. It was, my understanding, it was going to be on the agenda for Wednesday.
So we have seven on the board right now and they're contemplating going from eight to seven with an open spot.
They would contemplate recommending that to you, cause you ultimately determine the, the composition of that board.
But I'm going to say within the last two years, they wanted to expand the board, which we did. And now they're, they're saying to go from eight to seven. I know we had this discussion a little bit when we appointed Mr. Sanford, so now I'm a little confused.
And so was I. And so that's why, you know, so I'm good to hear they have a meeting coming up this week. You said they'll, that's wrong month. So I'd be looking to table this and hear their discussion and let them have their discussion on their board counts and let us know what their interest and intent would be. That would be what I would like before we appoint additional people.
We currently have seven on that board, is that correct?
Yes, and then you have the eighth one is a vacancy that this would be.
Okay.
So we currently have eight, including Mr. Beschen, the chair. And he is applying to continue on that board.
But, but they wanted to go to seven, which would, you know, create, somebody's got to go off the board.
It, it almost seems to be like they're looking at who the people are to determine the number and I'm not in favor of that.
The only thing I know I'd like to bring to your attention is that when I, I did meet with Tom Beschen, I don't know, last week, just to talk about some budget issues, looking ahead to some of the subcommittee work that the board of health does. He and I talked about those things. He wanted me to be aware that when you look at the positions on the board of health, I think it's four positions all end at the same time. So there's going to be significant turnover if those folks don't, don't ask to reapply. And he was just making that a note, that, you know, continuity, we were not discussing, I didn't know that his term was up necessarily, but that there's going to be a real need for some continuity on that board because the board is changing and we're asking that board to do more things. It's asking it of itself. They have taken on food policy council, opioid subcommittee, vaccination subcommittee, all doing great work. You know, we're working with a new employees doing some soil and water as he gets trained up. So there's lots of things inside that department that are changing. So the fact that the board chair is asking that he be reappointed to the board position, I would be in favor of that. He obviously knows about whether they're going to recommend to go or change their number, but I would support his application.
I, I also support his application, but if, I guess I'm getting mixed messages from them. So if, if they've asked us to hold off until they can meet and discuss it.
Which we didn't.
I'm likely to.
We didn't do that. We didn't hold off adding.
But then it falls to who the appointees are. And I think that's not a game that I think they should be playing. They asked us to increase the board and prior to you coming on the board and, you know, we assumed that that's what they wanted.
I don't think there's any gamesmanship there. I think it's just volunteers, county citizens doing the best they can and they're doing some great things.
I agree.
Some of those committees are knocking it out of the ballpark. The vaccination subcommittee is writing to the governor and just letting us know that they're writing.
I think they do great work.
It's pretty amazing.
And I think we took the position when we went from seven to eight, that they've asked for more and we, I think my, my position was the more of the mayor, so I, that's why I'm surprised at the request to, you know, go back to seven. So to me, I'm getting, I, I'm getting a mixed message here, so.
Precisely, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I'm going to withdraw my second. And then, so we can table this and have discussion and let them sort out what they want to do.
So it was my motion to approve and it's going to fail without a second?
Right. Okay. And I think the idea is to table, so.
Yeah, that, that would be my motion. Having knowledge, I had questions on this and having knowledge, having their meeting this week, let's have them have their meeting and have them discuss with the board and what their intent is for their board vision. So I'll make a motion to table this application.
I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Carried two to one to table. So that, as a table item will automatically come back, right, with this application? Okay. All right. Next item nine A three, EMS advisory committee, one vacancy for a four-year term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the. Okay, motion made in second to approve, the applicant's name is Sandy Nian.
That's a good question, does she serve on the Tom Hancock Grant Committee?
Sounded familiar.
I can.
Is that how we struggled to find that extra woman, you know, to fill that? We did, but it's just a question, it doesn't need to hold anything up, I thought Dave may be.
You want me to look, look it up? I may be able to find that here. These are my active files that bounce around in the back of my truck. Okay, must have moved that, because we're done with it.
Do you need that answer, supervisor?
Yeah.
I don't.
Okay, all right, you were, had the question, so, okay. All right, motion was made and seconded to approve the application of Sandy Nian, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried. All right, nine A four, Dubuque County Conservation Board, one vacancy for a five-year term ending on December 31, 2024, it says man or woman.
I had a conversation with Stacy, I'm excited to see your application, make a motion to approve, should be a good addition.
So you have two for consideration for one vacancy, so you have Stacy and then Mark Wagner.
Sorry?
So let's.
And I'm going to hold on that, I would like to have some discussion on both before a, a motion move, I would like to make a decision on one of the two candidates, just to just let you know, I'm, I'm not opposing the nomination, just would like to have discussion maybe first before we, we move forward with that.
Okay.
I apologize, I missed that.
Two, so we have Mark David Wagner and Stacy Conforti?
Yeah, for when I read, I don't, I don't know Stacy very well, but I do know Mark, and it looks like, you know, two really qualified candidates that are, have experience in this space. Mark has many years of experience and actively worked sand or volunteers with Mississippi River Museum and was on the board for a year, fulfilling that role, and he's been involved in county conservation for quite a while, and then it appeared that Stacy, related to her expertise as managing parks and properties through the Girl Scouts right now, and would have similar experience that would be wonderful value to the, to the board. So we have, we have two real good candidates, and it makes it, makes it difficult to decide one, many times when we have these volunteer positions on boards, we, we, you know, are searching out for those volunteers to, citizens to serve on these boards, so I'm, I'm very pleased that we have, have two, but the board needs to, to make that decision. This is one of those boards that is identified in state code as five, and so we can't expand it like we did on the Board of Health, because we had additional people that wanted to, to serve, so we do have to limit it to five.
What is the current gender balance?
Cindy Gatto is, and Mary Radoff are two women, and then there are three men currently serving, and Jeff Q is resigning, is leaving his position.
So it'll be two and two, so this can be, that's why this is man or woman.
I like very much, I know Mark as well, but I like Stacy's application, working with the Girl Scouts and that connection with, with girls outdooring and girls and the conservation effort, I think it's an, an amazing opportunity to have a new perspective, which I think is one of the things that our boards and commissions don't necessarily have, is new face, new experience, new generation.
And I generally concur with, with all of what you've said, and so if, whenever there's, I'm, I'm, I'm happy moving forward with Stacy's application when we have completed our discussion.
I think we're blessed to have two qualified citizens applying for this. There is a, is, is it, there a requirement that they're county residents, and do they both satisfy that?
Stacy lives in the city of Dubuque.
Okay.
Soon would be okay.
I just saw a reference in, in Mr. Wagner's, a reference to Jasper County, was that a previous?
I think he worked for Jasper County as well, County Conservation.
Okay, it says, it specifically says in his application that he lives in Dubuque County, it's a Bellevue address, but.
Jay, as a member of the Conservation Board, do you want to explore expansion of the number?
Well, I don't think we can, we did look at that, when we were looking at some of the health boards, I was kind of just wondering, and the state code does call out five, so if they change the, the law, we could, but right now it has to be five. And they have to be five and serve five, five-year terms. Now, obviously, the Board of Supervisors can, can appoint and assign those, those members outside of that.
Would you have any interest in relinquishing your position as a supervisor on that board to let two other qualified candidates take the position? It's just something to think about as well.
I would be in favor of expanding the board if the state legislator, legislature would be interested in it, yeah, I think going from five to seven would be more inclusive of, of having more people involved. Conservation and parks and outdoor stuff seems to be pretty popular during our strategic planning, we would have, you know, 30, 50 people, if not more, attend, we've had over 500 surveys that citizens put forward, so I think that shows you there's a lot of interest, so, so absolutely, but that's, that's a, we're a long way from Rome, as they say.
I wonder if, if that's something, if we could modify our priorities and get a feel from the ISAC and the UCC about this, I think it seems that, that there's interest in that, and, you know, if the code says five, I guess I would want to know why, and can we, you know, it would seem to be, if I was a state legislator, I wouldn't, why would they really care if it's five or seven or nine?
The, the good news is, you know, we do have a friends group, and there's a lot of opportunities to volunteer, now you're not actually on the board approving, you know, citing purchases like their, you know, new skid steer, Bobcat skid steer that they're going to purchase, and cellphone policies and other stuff like that, but you do get to identify park use, but the friends group is tremendous as well, and that's an excellent opportunity for, for people that, that want to be involved in conservation that either don't want to sit on the board or, you know, unfortunately have not been able to get their application through. But at this point, with two qualified candidates, I would be looking to, to take action, so if we're completed with some discussion, I would make a motion to.
I'm going to have, I think Anne already had made a motion, so we'll go back to her.
Okay, so a motion stands, all right.
I'm going to, Anne, do you want to restate your motion? Now that you have the awareness of two.
My motion is to approve the application of Stacy Conforti to Dubuque County Board of Conservation.
And I will second that.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded to approve the application of Stacy Conforti. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Okay, next we have the Historical Preservation Commission, one vacancy for a three-year term ending December 31, 2022. And we have the application of Jason Nises.
Make a motion to approve.
I believe he was the only one, I will second that motion.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the application, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three zero. Nine B, open vacancies on boards and commissions, information only. Go to next agenda item, would be item 10, personnel requisitions. We have two positions for roads, so I guess we go to Don Sherman, our HR director, and Anthony Bargette, our county engineer, for any input here.
The two positions, the first one relates back to, all the way back when Rick Herbst, maintainer operator, retired, and then we had a mechanic bid out of the shop into this position, and then we hired a mechanic, that, that, that former mechanic was now retired, bid back to the shop, and so we had this kind of merry-go-round happen, but we ultimately had a vacancy during that time in the M1 position, but we were equal to the, the employees that we had before because of the extra mechanic. That, you know, Vic Dottle retired, and so that brought that, that, you know, number of employees down one again. The second position is with, with Jim Larkin retiring, and we've gone through the bid process, people have shifted where they, they need to, need to be with the bid process, and now we're back to an opening in the M1, so we have two different M1s that have taken about a year, year and a half to kind of shake out to get to this point.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Second.
All, okay, motion made and seconded to approve the personnel requisitions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. All right, tabled and pending items, I have strategic planning, we have a meeting this week.
Wednesday, December 11th at 2:00 PM at the ECIA building.
Okay, scheduled from two to four, and that's a public meeting, is that correct? Yes.
There's a little bit of work they asked us to do, they asked us to put one, three, and five years on the items that we wish to make change.
All right, anything else on that? And we have some items that are tabled to work session today. All right, next item on the agenda is item 12, public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person, which are not agenda items, please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries, and I will quote prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. So if anyone would like to do that, please feel free to approach the podium. Seeing none.
Make a motion to recess.
There's a motion to recess, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Try to limit it to five minutes.
Five minutes would be fine.
Get back on track here.